All right, I will call the City Council Appointment Committee to order at 5:30. Councillor Kuzinski and Councillor Flood are present. The participants are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic as a result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12, 2020, allowing us to do so. So shall we start with the approval of the minutes? Any comments on the minutes?
I did notice that there was one section of the minutes. If you would mind just inserting my name as the person who had abstained.
Okay.
From the vote, as opposed to saying there was one.
Abstention, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good, just good procedure to know if somebody takes the abstention, that that was the person that had the name.
No problem.
Other than that, great, thank you very much.
I also wanted to say for the December 2nd minutes, to be more specific about Bednarz, we didn't vote to remove him. Basically, he was, he was removed from office, so it was kind of removed from our plate. Do you know what I mean? We didn't, we didn't make any kind of votes on him one way or the other, so.
Right.
We could say, shall I insert, removed by HR prior to our meeting? Or?
He was relieved of his duties.
They've removed or withdrawn, I mean, not withdrawn, but.
The language used was he was relieved of his duties.
Okay.
Prior to, so, so he was no longer up for reappointment, I would say it like that.
That may be the best way of putting it, yes.
Yep, I can make that amendment.
And that's it? So those two amendments, take the motion?
I move to approve the minutes, as aforementioned.
Second up?
I'll take a vote. JP?
Yes, JP, yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes, in first names. Also present, Omar Gomez. Are there any members of the public? Omar, do you have anything to say about anything that's on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. So today we have the mayoral appointments in front of us. The, which one? Let's see, I didn't, I heard back when Chris Korzak and Paul St Pierre, both, you know, very happy serving the city, want to continue to do so in their capacity. I talked to Ted Polakowski on the phone.
Polakowski.
Yeah, Sam?
Good job.
Okay, thanks. He's been, he's said over 30 years he's been on the Veterans Council. They haven't met since the pandemic started. They meet quarterly and they, it was interesting to hear what they do. They, you know, they do the flagging of the parades, they do the replacement of flags, they did Memorial Day Parade, they do monument, work on the monuments in the city. So, so that's the work that they do, and he's very happy to continue doing it. And Austin Sanders, I did not reach out to Austin Sanders, somehow I took that, but he's clearly filled out his paperwork, he's up for reappointment, do you know?
Yeah, Austin had appeared before us when, I think Omar was, we were on, both on appointments, and Austin has relatively new appointment for the board, relatively, within the last year, I believe. So I feel as if he has, I mean, I've certainly seen him in action in his public efforts.
Yeah, so I can take a motion probably to put these all together, package deal.
I would so move to approve all the appointments, Austin Sanders, Chris Korzak, Paul St Pierre, and Ted Polakowski, Paul for two positions, EDIC and Parks and Recreation, with term expirations December 31, 2023.
Second up?
Come on, take a vote, roll call, Councillor Kuzinski?
JP Kuzinski, aye.
Erica Flood, aye.
Lindsay Rochelle, aye. So moved. Oh, any discussion? Sorry for the ask, but we already had discussion, so. All right. So we voted to recommend those. So now we're on to our next agenda item. And just so you know, in terms of our time today, the next group has Zoom, it's a 6:30 meeting, so we probably want to be done by like 6:15, because otherwise they might just like grab it and we'll just be kicked off, so.
No problem.
So I was thinking today, we can kind of, we can start talking about it, also kind of clarify what we're doing a little bit more, because there's different appointments that we do. We do the mayoral appointments, we do the council appointments, we do the department head, kind of the city paid positions, so like the city officers, department heads, and members of, so I think we might, whatever process we create, it might be different for those different, you know, different categories. And not only in terms of the rule, but I was thinking, you know, anytime there's a change in the guard in the Appointment Committee, it's like, it would be nice to have some guidance. Like, here's the form letter you send to reappointments, or this is clear, just to help ourselves as a body going forward, so. So, so I think we can start talking about, because I think the main focus was the kind of the mayoral appointments and the, on the multi-member bodies, in terms of when they come in front of us, are we going to have a consistent way with which we handle those appointments?
So are we looking to establish sort of guardrails for questions, like general areas that candidates can be expected to field questions about, but not necessarily very specific questions? Because I feel if we limit it to like this specific list of questions, I don't think that's, that there's a one-size-fits-all list that we can really use across the board, especially if we were looking at, like you said, replacing the chief or replacing, you know, I feel like setting up some guidelines and guardrails to stay within could be helpful, but getting too specific could really limit our ability.
That's what I was saying with the categories, you know, like, I don't want to put the chief in the same category, just right now focusing on the multi-member body, the volunteer committees on the city. So I mean, I'd like to, that's the, the rule that I was proposing that we change and put some specific questions in there. I know the, the frustration that would occur, you know, we only have a few questions we can ask, but I also think there's an opportunity to publicly make any comments from, you know, if you have concerns from the public, from us, and then there could be a question like, is there anything else you want to address? And they can choose to address them or not. But otherwise, we're going to run into, and this is why state hiring committees have specific questions they ask, because my concern is just making sure that people are respected and get equal and consistent treatment when they come through our body. All righty. So I think I threw some questions out. Did you have any comment? Omar, Councillor Gomez, you're here, so I know you have some opinions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I agree with, with Councillor Flood. I do first have a few concerns, and I give you a call to talk about it, because I was kind of concerned to, don't have the ability to ask any question that we at the last minute want to do. That was my concern, but after the clarification.
I didn't quite, I didn't quite hear you, Omar, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, but not fully.
Can you hear me now, better? Now?
That's actually a little bit.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, because I thought you guys are going to talk about this at the last meeting, so I give the call to, to Councillor Rochelle, because I do have a few concerns about the new rule, and one of the, the concern was the ability to make question at the last, at the last minute. When I first read the rule, I was kind of confused that I, sound like we are not going to be allowed to do that, and that was my concern, but after listening, what Erica Flood, the Councillor Flood, said, and the question about that, I'm feeling more comfortable to pass it, because I think that when we have some controversies, if you want to call us that way, we should be allowed to ask whatever we want. And I, and I agree, and I agree with the guidelines, I think we should, I think the committee should have it, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be the only question that we're going to make, if we have to.
But how, in that case, how do you, how do you avoid happening what happened in the committee with the last round of appointments to the CRC, where people were on a very different line of questioning than other people that, when, I mean, there were a whole block of people went on that committee without even appearing at a appointment meeting?
I think we, we, we learned at that meeting so much to be ready for the next, for the next kind of controversial appointment. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I disagree with having some, this rule, this rule in place, the only concern that I have, and I think is because this is a democracy, we should act whatever we want. Of course, I, I, it's not me. I do agree that we should have some respect, and we should know how to address those questions properly, and I agree with you, I think last time was kind of mess. I, I do believe that I learned from that, I hope the new council in, in next year will, will follow what this council is doing. Again, I'm not against the rule, what I'm against is shutting down councils to ask. I think that's why people vote for us, to have a voice, and if, if my question is not one of the pre-question that we have in this document, so I feel like someone is telling me, hey, you know what, don't ask anything else. And I think our democracy said that we, that we can do it respectfully, that's, that's my point.
Can I make a request? Does anybody have the, the current standing rule handy that we could put up on the screen and just?
On the screen right now.
Oh, is that what's there? Hold on, let me crease that then. I was searching for it, but I was doing too many things at once, okay.
Well, no, it's just.
No, oh, this is, okay.
This is what I meant, the current rule just says that we investigate, that we investigate, it doesn't give us any kind of guidance on what that investigation means.
So do you have the current rule?
I can get it. I'm not going to be able to pull it up, I will read it, it's very, not that long.
Yeah, no, that's super helpful, just to give us a base of where we're starting.
The role of the Appointments Committee is to review and recommend confirmation or rejection of mayoral appointments to all multi-member boards and committees, as well as department heads pursuant to Section 210 of the Home Rule Charter. In combination with the Human Resources Department, conduct interviews for appointments made by the City Council pursuant to Section 28 of the Home Rule Charter, including city clerk, clerk of the City Council, city auditor, principal assessor, other city council appointments as may be defined in the future, and handle any disciplinary proceedings related to those appointments made by the City Council. So my feeling would be, I, that, like, I would like to, this is my, my suggestion, and I, in terms of adding questions, the only questions you could ask, but again, I don't feel like that would prohibit anyone to say, I would like to know, and then when you say, do you have any questions or further comments, they can answer, but when it turns into an interrogation of someone stepping forward to volunteer, and when people are treated differently in that situation, depending on who they are and what kind, you know, what's in the news that day, and how many, you know, what they're saying in East Hampton Arguments, I, I think that opens us up for bias and discrimination, and that is exactly why, when the state hires people, they ask the same questions to every candidate.
I don't, I don't particularly like the question that I'm reading, how do you currently participate in the city of East Hampton? I mean, if you live here, you participate every day with your tax dollars, I mean, that could be a barrier to just turn people away too, because if people feel like this is, they're trying to enter service by volunteering for a committee, and it's their first time stepping up, they may be intimidated by that question right there, to say like, oh, I already, I don't have a resume of service, and I'm going to have to say that out loud, that might deter somebody from even coming to the table. I, I just feel like that's a really kind of loaded question, that for some people just might be a deterrent, and I think if you've already submitted a resume as part of this process, so I think something more appropriately would be to require that candidates submit a resume along with a letter of interest, if that's not already happening. I think that's, that's more of a guideline that could get to the answer you're looking for there, right? Like, this?
No, I, I actually thought of that as like a friendly question, like, I coach softball, I, you know, I, I, because that's usually what people tell you, they tell you like how they're involved with their kids, it's, like, this process should be not, it should be, we would hope, a friendly process, I mean, that's how it usually is. Like, when I call, when I've been calling people about reappointments, it's like, they're happy to share all the work they've done, and they're happy someone's asking.
For a first-time person, though, that, that might just make them say, like, hey, I haven't done, yeah. It just feels very specific.
I'm a little intimidated by it, I'm a little scared.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, these are just suggestions, but I also don't want to require a resume, I feel like that could be intimidating.
I think a resume is a more professional process, I mean, if you are, if you're wanting to, I, I mean, is that not already part of the protocol, that you submit a letter of interest in your resume? If not, I would propose.
A letter of interest, I believe, is requested by the mayor.
Yeah.
And, and that letter of interest should be forwarded to us, and if it's not, I think we, we should have a, a letter of interest or an expression of interest on behalf of the candidate, and I think to say you might want to talk about certain things, you could, you could kind of guide what they talk about if you wanted to in some way, and say, if you want to let us know about this or that, that's great, but I think that's kind of understood for anyone who is putting themselves forward, that they would have that letter of interest. And, and I agree with, with Councillor Flood, that to have a resume would be wonderful, I mean, the resumes can just say so much about someone's experience, and that also talks not only about their professional experience, but oftentimes folks include things about their, their personal lives and how they interact with the city on your resume.
I agree too, but resumes are in fact a barrier, and a lot of people, especially people that haven't been in the workforce, don't have one, honestly, I mean, I don't.
I don't see it as a requirement, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I don't see it as, I think a letter of interest, that is required, the application is required, and we could, and it could be a resume if they want to, but I see that as a barrier as well. There's people not in the workforce that want to be participating and have something to offer, so, I mean, we, I agree, we want to keep the, we don't want to create barriers, we want everyone to, so this was, I, when I was seeing this question, it was not like to judge, but, so I, I can hear you, I don't want to, I don't want anything to be a barrier, I just wanted it to be more of, like, kind of celebrating, because usually, whether it's like they have kids in the school, or they go to the Memorial Day Parade, whatever it is, but if you think that's an intimidating question.
I mean, it can be for some people, I, I'm just trying to think of the first-time participant who's trying to find a place to enter, and I'm also just confused about, it says only the following questions may be asked of candidates for appointments, so are we saying these are the only four or five questions that can be asked?
I, I would take big issue with that, I think.
Yeah, I can agree with that.
These issues, these questions will be asked, sure, okay, fine, I think it's fine to say you'll be asked about A, B, and C. You may be asked about E, F, G, H, I, J, and other items, that's fine, I think, but to say that only the following questions may be asked, well, why are we here? Wouldn't be my thought, why are we here? If only these questions are going to be asked, well, let's read those answers, or let's hear those answers.
Do you think it's fair to provide?
We're hired by the public to do our best to make good decisions about people, and I think the various committees, hopefully, almost always, they're, they're non-controversial, for example, you, Lindsay, you had said that, that a whole slate of folks had been approved, well, the mayor handed a slate, no one from the community contacted, I think, contacted me about the initial slate for the CRC, so.
Well, actually, one woman was.
Any thoughts about it, and there isn't anyone from the council, I don't think any of the councillors had any questions for anyone.
Actually, one woman was kept off, one woman was kept off by.
Not on the initial, on the initial 15 people?
I believe that's when, when, the one woman in the community was kept off.
Okay, but that, I don't think that was by council.
Huh?
A guy?
No, it was a woman.
It was a woman?
It was, um.
We don't, we don't need to.
Laura, Laura Scott.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, I think also here, I mean, again, are we creating guidelines where this is like somebody's going to read this rule and understand, okay, these are the questions that I may be asked, and there may be others? I think I, I'm going to just propose also that, you know, a person's social media presence in the community needs to be up for discussion, because depending on what committee they're going to serve on, if they're out there publicly on social media making their opinions heard, that opinion needs to be able to be brought up in, in relation to the committee that they're going to be serving. And that could, that could, that could, that could be relevant to a number of committees out there, but if we're giving them, if this rule is to help the candidate understand the level of scrutiny that they may or may not face, and it just gives us, again, guidelines to work within, I think it's important to include social media in this discussion. It's, it is the way things are, I mean, there's a city councillor in Chicopee who, you know, said some pretty horrible things on social media and was removed, this, this comes up, and I think we should be aware of it and take it into consideration in this process.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
So I don't know, I'm not, you know, again, whether or not these questions are just out there as examples of what might come up, or if we're, we're telling future committee members to use these as guidelines for their due diligence, I think there should be some.
If you're going to ask additional questions, would you ever consider having those, like, provided in advance?
I mean, I did an interview today, and I didn't have questions in advance for my interview, so I don't see why, but.
I just want to know how you, you see that we can make sure that we don't have bias and discrimination in our process, that's what, that was my goal, and so I'm hearing, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing, I'm not hearing anything along those lines, so I'm open to being open to different questions, but I want to know how we are going to protect people from discrimination and bias when they come before our committee.
Well, I think it has to do with process, right? If the process is consistent, then, I'm not an expert in bias and discrimination, so I'll say that. I don't know if having a, a uniform process is the answer, but I don't, and I could see how possibly a uniform set of questions could be part of the answer, but I don't think it's the whole answer, because again, depending on what committee you're asking to serve on, or what position, I don't think that there's one set of questions that can really provide all the information needed to understand whether or not a person is fit to serve in that position.
Well, I, I know the current people serving on committees that have also had a very problematic social media presence and were not asked about it, so I'm just wondering why when a woman of color came before a committee, she was interrogated, yet, I'm not going to bring up the names, but I, there's a certain couple, sitting members of committees I'm thinking of right now, that have been very outspoken and problematic, I think, on social media. So why, I just wanted, so.
I guess to level the playing field, I'm saying everybody's social media presence should be up for, for discussion, because if you're going to be a public servant and a participant in a city committee, you are responsible for what you've said.
Okay.
And what you will say moving forward.
Can we create a general question about it versus?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
In September something, you posted this, and this, and this, and that, you know, it just gets, like, you used a bad word, or you, I don't know, it just, it turns ugly. And I feel like there's a general way, I mean, anyone can make comments.
Right.
Like, somebody could say, I had a real problem when this person posted blah, 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 and that person can choose to address it or not, and when you choose not to address it, that's also an answer.
Right.
You know what I mean? So it's not like I'm, I don't want to limit anyone's speech, like, anyone, public speak, any councillor can express any concern, and the person can answer if they choose to, but just putting it into like an interrogation mode, that some people go under it and some people don't, I have a problem with that.
So Lindsay, how do you envision this? Like, what is, when you think about having a non, unbiased process, like, what is your sort of initial vision of that process?
Well, like I said, I've served in many state interview processes, and the questions are always the same, but that doesn't mean you can't say, like, when you have a spot where you, like, if somebody, say some, say, say somebody made a series of posts you found problematic, there's no reason a councillor can't say, I would like to know, I found those series, that are problematic. Then it gets said, do you have any press questions or further comments? And that person could say, well, I would like to address councillor blah, blah, blah's concern, but it's different than someone being like interrogated.
Right.
And if they choose not to address the concern, it's still out there, and their lack of answer is an answer. But that's kind of how I feel, like, I just, I just feel like that sometime, and this isn't like just me, this is like data, when women, people of color come forward, there's, there's a different standard, and they're scrutinized into a certain level of perfection that white males in our society have not been subjected to. And that has played out here, and I don't, I don't want to see that play out here, so I, I want everyone, I want all concerns expressed, I don't want anyone to feel they can't express their concern, I just don't want to create interrogations.
You know, I, when I look back at the council appointments over time, and the controversial ones, I see both male and female candidates who have been questioned and rejected. We haven't had as many people of color applying as I think we'd like to see, so I don't think there's been lots of opportunities in that regard to have questions or not have questions, and we might have had some experiences, but we in fact had two candidates, if I recall, for appointment, and one drew more attention because I think of social media posts, and the language that was used, and I know I received lots of, of emails for that situation, and I asked questions, and I know I asked questions when other candidates, there were issues, both male and female, and those candidates were not recommended for reappointment.
But, okay.
I've always felt that the level of interest and level of questioning was appropriate to finding answers to questions we had received. Frankly, I'm not one to troll the internet and to troll Facebook or social media, so when I find, I don't know if you were, you were with us, Lindsay, at the time, I know you went on the council, and followed the appointment where the council unanimously did not appoint someone because of their social media posts.
I didn't know about that.
Yeah, and, and frankly, they were posts that I couldn't understand why anyone would make those kinds of posts, and then expect that they could be seen by the community, or it could be fair to all people in the community. I could bring them up on the screen if you wanted to see them, they were, they were just pretty obnoxious.
Right.
And I think we should feel free to bring those kinds of subjects up. And I think we should feel free to bring those kinds of subjects up whenever they occur.
Well, let me put it this way, do you really need to question that person about those posts? Or can you just bring up the post and say, "This is why I'm not voting for this person"? Like, what's the point of questioning them about it? Like, you can say, you can still talk about it, you can still say that's why you're not supporting the person, but, um, I just, like, what's the point of questioning? If they're offensive, they're offensive to you. Like, and the other thing is, when you're talking about controversial candidates, my point is, there's some people that weren't controversial, but maybe they are, and they're not looked at the same way.
Or maybe they should have been, is what you, in your opinion?
They're not scrutinized in the same way, so they're not controversial. That's what I'm saying. So I, I just don't, I just, like, I don't know what the benefit is of asking someone about their social media posts. They're out there, we can talk about it. They can, they, they can address it if they want to. If they don't want to, I mean, we can just say, "Well, I, that's too problematic for me, I'm not voting for this person."
I, I would say one of the benefits is for colleagues who are not on, who are not on social media as prolifically as some of us, right? So I guess for those, like, other committee members who are not necessarily following the feeds, then bringing it up is, helps to make them aware that this is out there for those that are-
I have no problem bringing it up.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, again, like, you know, why, why include it would be, uh, you know, a pro would be because, uh, somebody might not be aware because they're not plugged in. I mean, I still know people who are not on Facebook that are my age, that, you know, you just assume everybody's plugged in, and, uh, they're not all plugged in. So that would be one benefit. Um, I, I hear, I hear your, I also hear your point in that, um, for, you know, once the comments are out there, they are out there, so why bring it up? And I guess some of that would be to give a person an opportunity to explain further what they meant, because things and soundbites, I mean, I had a colleague that used to come across horrible in emails. I mean, they just were the, like, just the worst, like, it's like, what is wrong with this guy today? But if you pick up a phone and call him, like, the tone of the voice is very different than the shortly written email. There's just a very efficient person who was short and sweet with their words, and no, he's not ticked off, he just had something else to do, but he wanted to answer you. So there, there could be a translation that could happen too, where although I know people thought I meant this in that post, what I was really trying to get across was this, and I felt that I was misunderstood or misinterpreted. So there could be a benefit in the discussion in that way as well.
But it's an opportunity. If you say, "Do you have any questions or further comments?", and a councillor's already brought up that they feel the social media posts are problematic-
Yep. Yeah, so I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you now too, and just understanding the way that these questions could serve for the, in terms of the process, but that they're, the process is not limited solely to these questions. There, there is an ability to comment beyond these questions, for the councillors to comment beyond these questions.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just, um, wait, freeriding. I'm not like writing, I'm just like, I'm thinking as you guys are talking.
Yeah. So, so I guess I'm, I'm wondering then, like, and again, your idea of sending these questions ahead of time to help people prepare. So am I, am I correct in thinking then, um, I see below, uh, so your thought process, if I'm correct, is that what we could suggest is that a form letter gets sent to either an appointee or somebody who submits a letter of, somewhere along the way here, we need to let people know, you should submit a letter of interest.
Well, the mayor lets people know that.
Okay. But you, you would, you will receive a reply with, um, a set of questions you could be expected will be asked. However, and then, but there's some kind of disclaimer that says they're not limited to, like, these questions will surely be asked. Other questions may arise in the process out of discussion. Is that-
Well, did you see what I just put here? Like, this is how I would like, personally, the council members, the public may raise other questions or concerns, which will not be posed directly to the candidate, however they may respond to them in the final question.
Could you say that in other words? Because when I'm reading that, there is, we're not going to add, we're, we're going to say things, but we're not going to ask you about those things. And that just seems a little convoluted to me. I don't-
Like, am I going to say the question out loud to myself?
No, there's a time, we're just, when the public and speaker, when we're, okay, yeah, I just, just like you would express your concern, and then, I don't know, okay, well-
I think, yeah, I think you should, if you're going to have additional questions, you're going to have additional questions. You're, uh, I think it's good to have a baseline of questions that people can help prepare themselves for, and, you know, that gives them somewhere to start. It's almost like a warm-up or an icebreaker. They know, okay, I'm at least going to be discussing these items. From there, you know, they, other, other things could be, you know-
I mean, I think we should, like, if we're going to create a form, so basically, Erica, just so you know, like, they, the application and that goes to the mayor.
Right.
Us. Then the mayor sends us, sends to the council their, um, their appointments, and then we contact them. And so part of the thing too is like, in terms of just the process, and I think it's fun to educate people, is when I'm reaching out, they're like, "Oh, I already filled out the paperwork, why are you calling me?" And I have to explain, like, "Well, you filled it out for the mayor, but now we're the council." So it would be nice, like, as soon as they got, um, appointed by the mayor, that they got just like, congratulations on your appointment, you know, not, I mean, you've been appointed by the mayor, the next step in the process is blah, blah, just more like educating about government, like, because I seem kind of confused when I call, like, I thought I already filled that out, you know?
That may actually be something that I think we could ask the mayor to put in, in their communication with the person. Because that kind of sets them up for a call, not only from the chair of the committee, but any of the appointments people may want to call a candidate, or in fact, any councillor might, might be interested in calling and talking with someone who's been appointed. I just wanted to step back for a second into the process. The mayor, and this may account for us asking questions of some people and other appointments kind of just happening without lots of questions. Uh, the mayor doesn't recommend, doesn't say, I believe said to us that she didn't, although she made the appointments to the CRC, she did so on a first-come, first-served basis.
Like, she doesn't vet them?
No, no, no vetting except to find out that the person is a resident of East Hampton. That's, that was my, what I heard. I'm not sure what everybody else heard, if you heard the same thing. But in that case, all it takes for someone to be appointed to the CRC is, is to make an application, and they get an appointment.
Sure.
So the mayor isn't necessarily endorsing somebody, or vetting them, or thinking that that person would be a good fit for the community. Now, on the, all the other appointments the mayor makes, I think the mayor stands by those appointments in terms of that's someone that, that the mayor believes would work well for the community. So I think that may weed out some other people. Otherwise, for the CRC, anybody, if I'm, if I live in East Hampton, can be appointed. And will, not only can be appointed, but will be appointed. And that's why I think it's very important for us to be open with our, be, be open and available to ask questions. Because the mayor hasn't.
Right, right, exactly. So we also have, um, I think anyone getting appointed to any committee for the first time, and so reappointments, we should request, not require, but like, request their presence, and not in a, like, because let's just, let's go back to like 90%, 98%, 95% of our appointments are like little fanfare. But I think it would be nice just for that, just to, part of the democratic process that they come and we get to meet, I think it's just nice to meet and connect with the people coming through the city, not require, but more like invite them to come to the Appointments Committee, where these questions will be asked, and maybe others.
I know with the previous, uh, Appointments Chair, uh, that person invited everyone who had been appointed to come to the committee, and that was a standard process. So I, I would agree with you. I think it's important-
Yeah.
-to invite people, uh, and, and some will be available when we're available, and some may not.
Right.
So we'll make a note that it's 6:11, and you had-
Well, yeah, better, okay, so I think we got, this is a good beginning of the conversation, so I didn't, I just thought we'd get it started and keep going forward. So, um, if you guys can think about, these were just like, kind of, these were things I was, I just threw this together for a letter as an example, so maybe in between this meeting and our next meeting, think about the kind of standard questions that we would give them. Um, I hear you saying you don't want to be limited to those questions, but there might be questions that we ask, definitely ask as a baseline to every candidate. So those ones, we would send them ahead of time, and so maybe just think about what those would be, and, and make sure that, and we want to make sure that, because I don't, I haven't, I think only we've had new appointments since I've been on this committee, so do we usually get the letter of intent forwarded to us?
We got that one for the Arts Council.
Yeah, we usually get the letter, letter of intent and the resume. And in fact, we, i- if someone has it somehow slipped through the mayor's office without those two, we've turned them around. And said, we're not, you know, until you, you send us a letter of intent or resume, we're really not interested in, in, we will reject, because if we don't act on it within, I think, a certain number of days, they will automatically be appointed.
Okay.
But I, I, we, we're certainly ready to reject someone if they haven't submitted that, that letter of interest.
Uh-huh, and maybe if we can research, you guys can look into like a statement about social media, like, the socia, you know, social media presence, presence is taken under consideration as it is a way of, you know, interacting with the city, or, I don't know, think maybe we can just each on our own kind of research that a little bit.
So how does this rule affect the process out of the mayor's office? It does not-
It doesn't affect out of her office, but that doesn't mean I can't go just have conversations with her office and ask that, you know, I could draft some language and request that they put it in a letter. We, we can't require that, but-
Because I'm just hearing, there's definitely, there's, there's, sounds like there's a breakdown in protocol where like some, so, you know, there's no vetting in some cases, and there's vetting in other cases. So, so, well, with the CRC, there was zero vetting, but I'm hearing-
There may be reasons for that that I don't quite appreciate, and I'm not sure have been talked about, but the setting up of the CRC was part of the process of, of opening your community, and-
Yep.
And I think there may have been restrictions with the way the mayor put it, it was put together, where the mayor couldn't do any vetting.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm just trying to understand overall, you know?
That, I'm, I'm not sure I fully understand that.
Oh, yeah, even, even with CRC aside, I'm just trying to understand, like, I think if I could get a little bit better understanding at, at the mayor level-
Yeah.
-it would help me to make some suggestions. Okay, once it's gone through this process, then it comes to us. I would have a, a better idea of which recommendations I could make, because I would already know what kind of vetting, if any, has already taken place. So I think this is a really helpful discussion, just to know, oh, not everybody's being vetted. I mean, I'll tell you, ages ago, when I was on the Arts Council, I submitted a letter to Mike Tauschnick, and I got a letter back saying, "Congratulations, you're on." Nobody reached out to me, you know? And, and then at some point-
We should have questioned you a little bit closer. You slipped-
No. So, I mean, so, so I'm saying, you know, in my experience, it was a letter and a resume, and then I was all of a sudden on Arts Council. So, you know, obviously, things have changed over the years, but it doesn't sound like it's always consistent. So maybe we could use some consistency at that, you know, at step one, to bring it into step two as well.
So part of my homework between our, between this meeting and our next meeting will be to, um, talk to the mayor's office about the process, and if, you know, just, you know, would they be open to us adding language with further response? That kind of educates them, educates the nominee, the, the person who's being appointed as to the whole process. And also talk to them about maybe, um, making an online application in terms of breaking down barriers.
Yeah.
Or setting up barriers. I'd like to-
That's another, yeah, that's a-
Another issue might is that maybe for many folks, the online application might be setting up.
You can have both, both.
Yeah.
You need to have multiple modes of, um-
I, yeah, I would, I would, yeah, want it certainly to have both available.
Both, both available, for sure.
Yep.
I meant, I meant "and", not "instead of".
Yep.
Well, I don't want to, I just don't want to be like, all of a sudden, we're just like bopped off.
Yeah.
So I appreciate having this conversation with you too, thank you.
Um, Lindsay, that document that you were working on, did you email that to us, or is that something you can share with us? Because I can use the notes that you were making on that to also just-
That would be helpful.
Sure, I'll share it, yeah, because that was the, before I sent it to the council, and so you can just write on, write on it.
Great.
Yeah, that would be great.
But you know, we have to be kind of careful, because that's like, just, just don't, it's a Google Doc, so download it, and don't debate on the Google Doc, because it'll-
Exactly.
Yeah.
I just want to use it for brainstorming, so I can-
Google Doc, or any sort of deliberation.
Open meeting law by way of-
Exactly, yeah, no, I'll just hit print and scribble notes right on it, so that next time we meet, I can have some suggestions.
All right, that sounds good. I'll entertain them, oh, should we go to the next meeting? Or is this a good time? Should we just do this, like every two, uh, if we have appointments, this?
This in general works for me. I mean, I don't have any standing-
On off council?
In general, but sometime, well, no, I, I, you have to check finance. They often somehow manage to meet on off weeks on Wednesdays, I believe.
All right, so I'll wait to scheduling the next meeting, um, till I think about it a little more. Do you have anything else to say, Counselor Gomez, before we take a motion to adjourn? Okay.
Thank you for your presence, Counselor Gomez.
I move to adjourn? Or, okay, I'll second it up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Erica? Aye, Lindsay?
Aye.
All right, we'll have, I'm going to stop recording.